Good evening, going to call the meeting to order. My name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board. On behalf of my fellow Board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our October 8th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Sarah Hashi of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. Tonight's meeting also will be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow. All of our previous meetings are also currently available on the same platform. Before we begin, I would ask that our members and the Town Manager staff introduce themselves.
Beth Cassavant.
Teresa Flynn.
Michelle Conlon.
Carlos Garcia.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
And again, I'm John Samia, Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board. Now, go to the items on the agenda. First, under Prelimaries. First item is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
And it moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review and act to approve the minutes of September 19th, 2024, which was the roundtable, September 24th, 2024, the meeting, and October 1st, 2024 workshop. We'll take the Spirit of Shrewsbury Expo minutes at our next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Having moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is announcements and reports from the members. Anybody have any announcements at all?
I would say that member Cassavant and I held office hours today. We had good conversations with two residents, so always encourage folks at home to take that opportunity to engage with us at our first Tuesday meeting of every month. So that's the second Tuesday from 5:30 to 6:30.
No.
Great.
Hi, Kader. We'll be with you in a moment.
Thank you, Carlos. Anything else? If not, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, is Town Manager Report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. One announcement and four things to brag about, I guess. So the first is, I'm very pleased to appoint Tim Fitzgerald to the Planning Board. Mr. Fitzgerald will be taking over the seat that was most previously held by Mr. DiPaolo. And I want to thank Mr. DiPaolo for stepping in and being Chairman over the last 16, 18 months. And I look forward to having Mr. Fitzgerald on the Planning Board starting this month. I want to talk about a couple different things. First and foremost, we have received a $40,000 municipal road safety grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety at the state. This will be used by the Police Department to ensure traffic safety measures, education and enforcement when necessary is in place. So it's a great asset to bring additional safety measures to the community. I want to celebrate Sharon Thomas, who received her certification as a Massachusetts Municipal Clerk. This certification comes through the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association, and as a result of years of continuing education that Sharon has eagerly gone through. So congratulations to her in receiving this very esteemed certification. I'm also pleased to report on two awards that the town has received. First, the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Award. This award, this is the first time the town has received this award. To earn this recognition, budget documents must meet program criteria established by the GFOA and excel as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and a communications tool. So it's not just about the numbers, it's about explaining to the community how this primary policy document works on behalf of the community to meet our goals and satisfy the needs of the community. So really proud to receive this Distinguished Budget Award. I want to commend staff across all departments as they contribute to the development of the budget. And special recognition goes to Assistant Town Manager for Administration of Finance, David Snowden, and Management Analyst Alex Martinez. They're the ones that put the budget together, applied for this Distinguished Budget Award, and were successful in their endeavors. So congratulations to all of them. And then finally, the town has received a High Performance Government Award from OpenGov. OpenGov is a software provider, and we utilize their software platform for most of our public-facing electronic programs. It's an electronic storefront, so if you have ever received a building permit or applied for a license through the Board of Health, or the Select Board, or a dog license electronically on our website, that is enabled through the OpenGov software system. The OpenGov High Performance Award is provided by the company to celebrate the most forward-thinking government agencies, higher education institutions, special districts, and other public sector game changers. So the town of Shrewsbury is recognized for its adoption and rollout of OpenGov and really expanding our use of it to provide more citizen-centric services through our website, which is part of our strategic plan initiative. So again, thanks goes to so many different departments. This work was really spearheaded by a number of department leaders in rolling out their programs through the OpenGov system. But none of it would have been made possible without Julie Tierney, who is an Assistant to the Town Manager and works in our office and has taken over the optimization of our use of software and really led this OpenGov initiative. So thanks to Julie and all others who have contributed to this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good to hear a lot of great work, great results, and a lot to be proud of. And what I heard from that is Town Staff's always striving for ways to deliver services better, and which is great to hear. And we knew as part of the strategic planning, there was a lot of excitement behind the initiative and with all stakeholders, and everyone continues to march forward on that and look for ways, better ways to do things. So that's great news. Thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Pursuant to Select Board Policy 31, this is an opportunity to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during our meetings on matters within our authority. No one has expressed the desire to speak in front of us this evening. However, in the future, if you'd like to speak at a regularly scheduled meeting, please notify the Chair before or through the Select Board's Office by the end of business on the Monday prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting by written correspondence or email at selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov. As Carlos had mentioned earlier, another opportunity off camera, if you'd like, as well, right across the hall during our first Tuesday meeting of the month. We'd love to hear from you, and we've had a lot of great conversations with citizens, and we welcome to hear from you as well in that forum, too. Next item is under Meetings and Hearings. We have a 7:05 public hearing to review and act on the application of Kader Apadia on behalf of Caparia Cafe LLC DBA MOTW Coffee and Pastries, 378 Maple Avenue, Unit 3108, for a common victular license. This item requests our approval for a common victular license for a new business in the Commercial Plaza at 378 Maple Avenue. And I will actually let the proponent of this talk about office hours in his business. So I'd like to turn it over and ask that Mr. Apadia introduces himself, talk about the business. So the floor is yours. And with that, make sure that we open the public hearing and hear from Mr. Apadia. So, good evening, sir.
Hello?
Kader, can you hear us?
I can, yes. There's a little bit of echo.
Are we good to go? Yes, if you could proceed. Thank you for coming this evening. If you could tell us a little bit about your business, we'll work through the agenda.
Yep. So my name is Kader Kapadia. I actually own the MOTW Coffee and Pastries in the Shrewsbury Marketplace. So we're a specialty coffee shop that serves a variety of different, you know, lattes, refreshers, traditional Yemeni chai, along with muffins, bagels, and, you know, a couple of toast items. Pretty simple operation. But yeah, it's really just a specialty coffee shop with a few Arabic-inspired pastry items.
Thank you. What are your proposed hours of operation?
Sure. So during the week, Monday through Thursday, we are open from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'm sorry, 9:00 p.m., my bad. 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then on Friday, we open at 7:00 a.m., a little bit earlier, and are open till 1:00 a.m. And Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And then Sunday is 9:00 to 9:00.
Board members, any questions? Working through the agenda.
I know, it's awkward.
Well, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open this up to the floor if anyone would have any questions or comments. Not seeing any motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Having moved in second, and all those opposed to closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Members, what is...
I move the board approve the common victular application of Caparia Cafe LLC DBA MOTW Coffee and Pastries.
Second.
Having moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations and welcome. Good luck. Next item on the agenda is meeting with Christina Ordang, Director of Human Resources regarding proposed amendments to the Personnel Bylaw. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, all. I'm Christina Ordang. I'm the Human Resources Director with the town. Thank you for your time this evening. I am excited to be here tonight to provide you with a detailed overview of the proposed changes to the Personnel Bylaw and ask for your consideration in placing a warrant article on the November 18th, 2024 Special Town Meeting warrant. These changes are designed to maintain the competitiveness of the town's benefits available to town employees and streamline administrative processes to better align with current practices and legal standards. This proposal is the culmination of over two years of thoughtful discussion and strong support from the Personnel Board. This proposal is subject to a formal vote at the next Personnel Board meeting on October 17. The most significant of these changes is the introduction of Sick Leave Plan 4, a new option that provides a more comprehensive and flexible leave structure. This proposal comes at a time when paid family medical leave is a prominent focus within private and public sector organizations in Massachusetts and beyond, with many communities moving in this direction and a few already implementing paid parental leave policies. We are introducing several important updates to ensure our employment policies are modern, clear, and reflective of current work practices. We propose redefining full-time employment. We are introducing a definition for inclusive service. We will establish a paid family medical leave benefit year. We will redefine a permanent position. Given that police and fire chiefs have individual employment contracts, we will explicitly exclude them from the general classification and compensation plan. We will remove outdated language, including elimination to references of the Emergency Employment Act and the Comprehensive Employment and Training Act. We will remove language related to temporary positions within civil service. We will remove language related to military leave, and we will remove language related to Sick Leave Plan 1. We are also proposing several operational adjustments to streamline our processes and reflect our current practices. These include transferring the responsibilities of determining on-call pay, approving hiring rates, salary increases, and vacation leave amounts from the consideration of the Personnel Board to the Town Manager. These changes align with how we've been managing these aspects already and are intended to enhance efficiency without disrupting our current operations as the Personnel Board meets less than monthly. It is also important to clarify that while vacation time is provided to our employees in a lump sum, it is accrued throughout the year for payout purposes at the time of termination. Finally, we want to emphasize that employees are required to exhaust all accrued paid time off before moving into an unpaid status. This approach helps us manage our future liabilities related to payouts. Paid family medical leave is a significant focus for the Massachusetts Municipal Human Resources Association, with many communities exploring this option and several already implementing paid parental leave policies. Notably, Nantucket adopted Chapter 175m Massachusetts Paid Family Medical Leave at its May 2024 Town Meeting. Other communities that offer paid parental leave include Lexington, Boston, Norwood, Hockington, Cambridge, Newburyport, Worcester, Dalton, Norfolk, and Belmont. Shrewsbury has opted not to adopt Chapter 175m, aligning with the recommendation of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, or MMA. The MMA's position is based on several factors, including the cost implications of employer contributions, the administrative complexity of adding another layer to benefits administration, and the reduction in flexibility that comes with adopting a one-size-fits-all state approach. Instead, Shrewsbury Sick Leave Plan 4 enables us to offer a customized family leave benefit that closely aligns with the state provisions while maintaining our local priorities. This approach ensures that we remain competitive with other local governments, state entities, and the private sector as they move towards similar family leave policies. This new plan would be applicable to all employees hired on or after July 1st of 2025. Non-union employees currently under Sick Leave Plans 2 or 3 may opt to switch to 4 annually. Those who elect to switch will remain on the new sick leave plan for the remainder of their employment. The chart on the PowerPoint illustrates the differences between Sick Leave Plan 3, the Proposed Sick Leave Plan 4, and Massachusetts Paid Family Medical Leave. Beginning at the Disability Coverage Feature, the town currently offers up to 52 weeks of disability coverage paid at 80% of an employee's base salary. The Proposed Sick Leave Plan 4 offers up to 20 weeks of the disability coverage at 80% of an employee's base salary. Massachusetts Paid Family Medical Leave offers up to 20 weeks of disability coverage paid at a maximum of $1,129.82 per week. Continuing down the chart to the Family Leave Feature, you will see this benefit is not offered under Sick Leave Plan 3. Under the Proposed Sick Leave Plan 4, we offer up to 12 weeks for bonding with a new child, up to six weeks for family care, and up to 26 weeks for caring for an injured service member. Massachusetts Paid Family Medical Leave offers up to 12 weeks of family care, including bonding with a new child, and up to 12 weeks for caring for an injured service member. Continuing down the chart to funding, you will see that both Sick Leave Plans 3 and 4 are funded through regular salaries. The maximum benefit offered by the state continues to change, which is why the town chose to continue its practice of offering 80% of the base salary. This ensures employees receive a more stable and predictable income during their leave, which is crucial for maintaining financial security. Massachusetts Paid Family Medical Leave is funded through contribution from both employers and employees. For medical leave, employers contribute 60% of the premium, and employees cover their remaining 40% through payroll deductions. For family leave, employees are responsible for the entire premium through payroll deductions as there is no employer contribution. In contrast, Sick Leave Plan 4 is fully funded through regular salaries, eliminating the need for additional contributions from the town or employees. At a local level, the financial impact of employer and employee contributions would be relatively minor and would offer limited practical benefit. With Sick Leave Plan 4, positions temporarily vacated due to paid family medical leave are not backfilled, allowing the 20% salary saving from those on leaves to be reallocated within affected departments to fairly compensate staff who take on additional responsibilities. Moving down the chart to the Total Paid Time Off feature, Sick Leave Plan 3 currently provides up to 32 days of paid time off, which is reached after 20 years of service. In contrast, Sick Leave Plan 4 offers the same 32 days of paid time off after 10 years of service. Among our 277 full-time and part-time permanent employees currently employed, the average tenure is eight years, with 68% having been with the town for less than 10 years. Comparatively, across all industries, in the years of 2022 and 2023, the average employee stays with a company for around four years. And over the past 40 years, the median tenure for wage and salary workers aged 25 and older has remained steady at approximately five years. Given these trends, we aim to align our leave policies with the current state of our workforce. We propose increasing vacation time by one week for each tenure band, except for the top tier, which will remain capped at five weeks. This mirrors a trend among local governments, including Hockington, Natick, Newburyport, Foxborough, Needham, West Springfield, Situate, Ware, and Norwood, which have all recently enhanced their vacation time for new hires. Additionally, to streamline policies and reduce administrative burden, we recommend eliminating the two personal days for employees covered under Sick Leave Plan 4. Overall, we are seeking to provide a greater and more flexible paid time off benefit earlier in our employees' tenure with the town as the 20-plus-year bracket is now rarely reached. Sick Leave Plan 4 positions Shrewsbury competitively and employs support among other communities, state entities, and the private sector. The administrative updates align policies with current practices and legal standards. The proposal is a culmination of over two years of thoughtful discussion and strong support from the Personnel Board. The Personnel Board has engaged in ongoing discussions regarding Sick Leave Plans, short-term disability benefits, and the utility of FMLA since February of 2022. In 2023, these discussions involved to include more in-depth conversations about paid family medical leave. By April of 2024, the Board received a redlined version of the Personnel Bylaw outlining proposed amendments for the upcoming Special Town Meeting. Throughout several meetings, the Board cautiously scrutinized the potential impacts of the proposed benefits, carefully weighing the implications. Through prudent deliberation, the Board affirmed the importance of these changes in maintaining the town's competitive edge with other local governments, state entities, and the private sector, and expressed their support for the proposed Sick Leave Plan. The proposed amendments have now undergone legal review, and the Board has reviewed and approved these recommendations. This proposal is subject to a formal vote at the next Personnel Board meeting on October 17. Thank you all for your time and consideration this evening. I'd now like to conclude the presentation and field any questions or concerns that you may have.
Thank you, Christina. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Teresa.
Could you go back to the comparison?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thanks, Christina. With the Sick Leave Plan 4, you noted that mass-paid family leave does have a weekly cap to their benefit, and you're not proposing a cap. You're looking to give the 80% salary for 20 weeks. Did you consider a cap?
So we had considered the cap to be at 80%. We had spoken to the Personnel Board as that being a sort of determinant as opposed to it being at 100% of an employee's pay. But we had not considered a dollar amount for a cap as it would require us to continue to return to Town Meeting with each year for an adjustment.
Yeah, Mr. Mizikar.
And the other part is because we are vastly reducing the total benefit that is eligible under the disability coverage from 52 weeks to 20 weeks.
That's what I'm saying. Okay, so the disability is moving from 52 weeks, and then you're, you currently don't have family leave, but you're doing six weeks.
Correct.
Okay. Now I get it. All right. Thank you. That makes more sense.
And just a quick question. So on the 80%, for the remaining 20, can the individual on leave use at that time vacation that they have to make up the difference?
We do allow that, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other, thank you. Any other questions? I have a couple, but I'll hold up. So one other question. So I understand the competitive nature of it, and it makes sense. Appreciate that the non-cash impact, what you're doing is saying, okay, 80%, we're keeping the, holding back the 20% to cover that lost abilities, the lost performance at that time. Was any of this as well developed from exit interviews from employees as they're leaving the town, and does that address that as well? That things in here, it's a culmination of a lot of things. Talking through people through the year, and I'm leaving because of X. Does that also play a role in this?
So we've heard from exit interviews, but I think overwhelmingly we've heard from, through our union negotiations that are, which is really a one-on-one setting where employees have the ability to tell us what their wants are. We also heard this information when we did an employee engagement survey.
Okay. And then, when I was looking through the bylaw, and when you explained it, it was clear. Plan 1 seems like there's no one left anyways, and 2 and 3, it just laddered over time. When I look at Plan 4, it does talk about to go from 1 to a 3, went to 4. It's not as, and maybe I missed it, but asked before it's approved just to look at it again to see if it's clear that once you opt over to Plan 4, you can't come back.
Yes.
So that was clear when you presented it. I may have missed it under Plan Number 4, but if I did not miss it, if we could consider adding a sentence to make it clear that once you come over and the benefits speak for themselves, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, he also wanted to ask a question. What is the compensation for family leave? Is it 100% of pay?
It's 80%.
It is 80%? Okay. I just want to clarify that. It might be in your memo more explicitly. I'm just differentiating between disability and family leave, and I see that you have indicated the length of time, but I don't see the compensation amount in that. May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, go ahead.
Understand that it's funded. You've already budgeted for salaries, so when someone's out. But do you see situations where you have to pay for replacement workers, where there could be an incremental cost?
So in my six years here, we've already been offering the disability benefits for your own personal illness or injury. We have never backfilled or had a temporary employee hired in those instances.
Thank you.
I have one final question. So in terms of tracking, looking under Plan 4 and understanding that the employee's benefit year is going to be unique to the extent that they actually caught, utilize this benefit? How is it tracked?
So we track it through a spreadsheet as we have to track for FMLA right now and also for the disability benefits. So we do have a system in place that's working well.
And will work as we're doing the FMLA paperwork and track all of that, and the same for intermittent leave as well?
Yes, it will run concurrently.
Okay. Good. That makes sense. Anything else? So there's no action required at this point? But we take it up at our next meeting as part of the work? Okay. Anything from you? Okay, great. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming this evening. Appreciate it. Very informative. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, under New Business, is to review and act on the Planning Board's recommendation on the proposed zoning bylaws amendment for the November 18th Special Town Meeting and refer said amendment back to the Planning Board for public hearings. This agenda item requests that we review the Planning Board's recommendation on the proposed zoning bylaws amendment to comply with the proposed zoning bylaws amendment to comply with the MBTA Communities Act and vote to refer the proposed amendment back to the Planning Board for public hearings. Welcome, Mr. McGoldrick. If you could talk and provide a little more detail on this.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board, for having me this evening. So the memo before you is reflective of a vote of the Planning Board. They did review the MBTA zoning requirements, or proposed zoning, and they're recommending it for placement on the warrant for the November eighteenth special town meeting. They are requesting that the Select Board refer it back to them for their public hearings, which will be through October seventeenth, October seventeenth and October twenty-fourth. Those have been scheduled, but we do need that to be referred back. I do have a number of prepared comments that I'd like to speak to, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. So on October third, staff met with representatives of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EUHLC, their pre-adoption team, to discuss our draft proposal. Although formal comments have not yet been received, they have completed their review, and we discussed their findings in depth. I'm pleased to report there were no findings in relation to our proposal which conflict with the three A legislation or guidelines. We do anticipate that EUHLC calls cautionary recommendations, which have no impact on compliance, but are recommendations for policy considerations. Staff will review these considerations and adjust the proposal accordingly. Although we are still awaiting those formal comments, I do want to go into a little more detail on the cautionary recommendations and how we anticipate addressing them. The first, the pre-adoption team identified provisions which toe the line between buy right and discretionary approval, also known as special permit, namely requiring adaptive reuse analysis and a requirement to provide or enhance a neighborhood community feature. Per three A regulations, the zoning should not impose restrictions on multifamily housing that other zoning use types do not have. As recommended, staff will evaluate with Town Council if these requirements should be relocated to the subdivision rules and regulations, or should be removed outright. The pre-adoption team also noted provisions in the existing zoning bylaw, which this overlay should either be specifically exempt from or otherwise modified to meet three A, namely the existing parking requirements require one point five spaces per unit, which is acceptable. However, they also require sufficient off-street parking for visitors and employees, which is not specific enough for buy right zoning under three A. Needs to be a specific formula. As recommended, staff will review their recommendation of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, perfect fit parking study for parking utilization of multifamily developments, as well as consider other metrics to appropriately scale visitor and employee parking in our zoning. The existing definition of family was also noted. Three A does not allow restrictions on occupants, and this definition could also pose an issue with fair housing laws. As recommended, staff will be reviewing that definition of family in the existing bylaw with Town Council, and will either exempt TOD zoning from that provision, or amend the language as appropriate. Finally, the pre-adoption team recommended the district boundaries be slightly adjusted to include portions of the public rights away in Route nine and Route twenty to make better use of the growth density provisions. As recommended, staff will adjust the district boundaries to include those portions of right-of-way in Route nine and Route twenty. With this all in mind, I'd like to take this opportunity to briefly recap the events which have brought us here this evening in relation to the upcoming zoning proposal. The zoning proposal has been drafted in order to satisfy the requirements of MGL Chapter forty A, Section three A, which were instituted as a legislative mandate. This proposal was drafted by staff in coordination with public engagement through community forums and the MBTA preference survey. It has been the subject of both public and professional review and discussion by town legal staff, municipal staff, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, the Attorney General's Office, Select Board meetings, and Planning Board public hearings. We are confident in our ability to bring this proposal, which has now been thoroughly vetted, to town meeting floor, to deliver on our responsibility to the community to allow them to vote on a proposal which they can be confident will satisfy the requirements of MGL Chapter forty A, Section three A. You will recall, when I last spoke to this item with the Select Board, I asked that we shift the conversation from the broad politics of the legislative mandate and focus instead on the matter which will be before town meeting to vote on November eighteenth, specifically the language of our proposal, which largely remains unchanged from its original form. I would ask that we now take up that discussion tonight and through the Planning Board public hearings scheduled on October seventeenth and October twenty-fourth at seven P M. I'm happy to answer any questions that you or the public may have between now and November eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. So I also sat in on that call, and what I heard from them was, as you had said, that compliance wasn't an issue, there were things to work on, like as you've identified, which appeared to me pretty easily interwoven in what we're going to present. So the process was important for us, but as you said, what was presented was consistent with what we presented earlier, but it's good to make sure it's vetted and cover all our bases, which have now been done, and then we have the opportunity to debate the merits. So I think it was a well-crafted original bylaw, so a good job with that. In terms of timing, the EUHLC also had said, and I was just writing notes, so if you covered it, pardon the redundancy, they'll, we'll have their official letter before special town meeting, hopefully in a couple of weeks, and their commitment was, we hope to, in mid-October, we ask for it, they'll strive to do it, but we'll definitely have it before special town meeting as well, just reiterating everything that you had summarized to give town meeting members comfort regarding what's in front of them, is expected to pass muster, and we've done everything we can to ensure that. So with that, I appreciate your presentation, and open up to members for questions or comments. I know we've talked about this a lot over the last period of time. Any questions?
No question. I think, just making sure that, I mean, I know people are, town meeting members are being made aware of the process through Taylor's regular updates, but just making sure that we again make every effort to make everybody aware of the hearings and keeping the the website fresh on clearly outlining what's under consideration, which I know most of it, if not all of it, is currently there.
Yeah, so we did recently kind of go through the the website and did a refresh to make sure that the the most relevant information is upfront. It is all there, even even past information, but we wanted to make sure up at the top of the pages is specifically the the language and the map as we have it drafted. We'll continue to update that as we kind of push out more information, and I know Taylor is, has been, you know, emailing, we'll continue to kind of email out that information, so. Or, you know, I I fully understand this is a complex topic, and we want to make sure that we are getting that information out and helping the public to make an informed decision. So to that end, again, you know, I would hope that, you know, anyone with any questions, feel free to contact our office and get in touch, and we're happy to to provide any support or information that's needed, so.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Do you have another one? Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, I've been traveling for work, so I, wasn't there the the hearing before the State Supreme Court regarding, which, was it Milton's appeal?
It was just today.
It was yesterday.
Yesterday. Was it, does anyone know if it was concluded or if it's ongoing?
I believe it was just the opening oral arguments. I haven't had a chance to digest them.
I know some people will be wondering sort of the outcome of that, and it's likely, they said it could be a few weeks, it could be a few months, but it's, it could be very likely that we don't know the outcome of that before we're, you know, deciding before our special town meeting, so I was just wondering if anyone had an update on on the process.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the SJC public proceedings have concluded, and now it's there, it's under deliberation, and they'll render a decision within the next one hundred and thirty days?
Hundred and twenty is their deadline.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah. Thanks for the work. I know it's a ton, and it's, it seems like the target's always kind of moving on us. What can people expect? Like, what are the opportunities for residents, either for you, Kevin, or for you, Chris, if they want to express their opinions about the proposal? Where are the opportunities to do that, and when? I know Planning Board, you said, has two meetings, October seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, and then there'll be Finance Committee as well? So when when someone goes to those, what can they expect as far as gaining information? Because I think sometimes when we have a public hearing, right, the the idea behind a public hearing is that whatever border committee is holding the hearing is more in a listening mode, but I think in a situation like this, people are sort of looking for answers to questions, so I'm trying to understand where people go to get their questions answered or their concerns or more information, rather, will it be more of an interactive, or is it really just the Planning Board and the Finance Committee are listening?
Yes, I mean, I think we we do try to balance that interactivity versus versus listening. There's certainly a dynamic to the public hearing process. I I think, you know, to that end, I always, you know, we make a lot of effort with our website to have a lot of the information available, but I I would say that contacting our office, email, phone, or stopping in during office hours, we do make staff, you know, this is a priority for staff, and they will make the time to to respond and provide information in a meaningful way. So what I would say is, you know, we we try not to be reactive, we want to get the right information out there, and again, this is a complex topic, so if we don't have the answer immediately off the off the top of our heads, we are happy to go and and find that information and give a response back, so.
If I could just add a little bit there. So I I think folks would also want to consider the Planning Board public hearings and the Finance Committee public hearing differently, right? So the Finance Committee has a different purview and responsibility under our charter and governance structure than the Planning Board does. So those, you know, the Finance Committee is advising town meeting and making a recommendation to town meeting that is a little bit broader than the, you know, just the zoning bylaw, but is grounded in that zoning bylaw. The Planning Board is solely focused on the zoning bylaw, so it would be less about, I know there's been conversations in the community about cost impacts and the ability to provide public infrastructure and public services. It's not that the Planning Board doesn't take that under consideration, but that would be more appropriate in the Finance Committee hearings than it would be in the Planning Board hearings. So I, you know, affirm what Mr. McGoldrick says, we will try to answer questions at the discretion of the chairs of those meetings and be interactive with folks. And I will also just underscore what Mr. McGoldrick said, the language of the zoning bylaw itself has been on our website for months. There's minor tweaks that we need to make, and we'll be very transparent when we make those tweaks. So if anyone's really interested in digging in, you know, it's there, it's available, take the time to read it. And then, you know, the informing the Finance Committee, having a conversation about cost implications and things like that, that we can anticipate, we'll be prepared to have those conversations in front of the Finance Committee. Less of a purview of the Planning Board, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, not seeing any. So for municipality to formally adopt changes to its zoning bylaws, it must follow the procedure outlined in Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section five. The kickoff of the procedure happened on October third, twenty twenty-four, when the Planning Board reviewed the zoning bylaws amended in bylaws amendment and recommended them to the Select Board, which initiated the process, which now kicks it back to us. The next step is, we receive the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaws, and we decide whether or not, as part of this process, to submit the proposed amendment to the Planning Board for a public hearing. So that is what is in front of us now, to, if we take their recommendation in effect and now vote to submit the proposed amendment back to the Planning Board, and we've already talked about a couple of public hearings to move forward with that process, and then the Planning Board, under the statute, has to hold at least one public hearing, they're planning for more than that, make recommendations, either written or oral, and then the town meeting will vote on the proposed amendment, and that's part of the process that we're aware of, and we'll talk as well about warrant articles at the special town meeting shortly, where this fits in with that. So what's the pleasure of the Board?
I move the Board to submit the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to the Planning Board for public hearings.
Second.
Have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? None? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. Thank you for your presentation and your hard work. It was good news from the EUHLC, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is, also under new business, item number nine, to review the draft warrant for the November eighteenth special town meeting. Mr. Mizikar.
Board members, we will walk through our ten article proposed draft special town meeting warrant. We have a slide presentation that I'll work through and will be supported by others as we go through the process on several of the articles. First, I'll just remind everyone, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P M. at the Oak Middle School is when the special town meeting will be held. Those hearings that we just talked about relative to the zoning bylaw amendments will occur on Thursday, October seventeenth, Thursday, October twenty-fourth. Those are the two public hearings at seven P M. held by the Planning Board. The Planning Board will reconvene on October thirtieth to make their recommendation with regards to the zoning bylaw adjustment. The Finance Committee will hold their public hearing on all warrant articles on November seventh at seven P M. at the Town Hall. Actually, that may change to six P M. as we consider the schedule, and that will be finalized by the Finance Committee at their meeting this Thursday. We just may need the extra time to get through the entire warrant. So Article one that we're proposing for the special town meeting is adjusting the operating budget. We will go through all these articles in great detail with the Finance Committee, and of course, when the Board votes to consider the articles and sign the warrant, but make no doubt about it that we will need to make adjustments to the operating budget. This will address matters associated with revenue, as they have changed since the state budget was enacted after our local budget was enacted, so we need to make some adjustments. We'll make some minor tweaks throughout departmental budgets to make sure that anything that we've learned since May can be adjusted, so we don't have any deficiencies throughout the course of the year. Moving on, Article two, we receive a ten percent fee with every ride share transportation network companies, think Uber and Lyft, so when those rides are taken, we get ten cents provided to the town. We need to appropriate those funds, they get there for a limited purpose, and we would plan to do that through Article two, and we'd be moving funds from the last several fiscal years that we've received. I know the number from fiscal year twenty-four is a little over thirteen thousand dollars. Article three, we'd like to have a detailed conversation about this item with you this evening, and provide some updates to you from your last meeting, and this is associated with the Department of Public Works project, the Municipal Facilities Optimization Project that the Board set out to work on starting this past spring. And as we've moved through the work that has been done by the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee, we have a solid cost estimate for preliminary design work and the ultimate project that has been conceived for the buildings at two oh five through two eleven South Street, which is known as the DPW Garage. But we want to take an opportunity and do a little bit more planning work associated with not only those facilities, but the Town Hall, to ensure we can garner the greatest efficiencies and economy of scale as we we take on a project for the benefit of municipal and school administrative facilities. So I will be joined in this conversation now by the the two assistant town managers, and and we'll walk the and we'll walk the board through what our recommendation is as you consider this draft special town meeting warrant. I will remind board members that when we had the presentation with the Facilities Optimization Committee at your last meeting, we identified a total project cost for the South Street Garage at just shy of twenty-seven million dollars. We've done further analysis with regards to the split of how debt service like that could be funded and identified additional design work that would be merit at this time, and we'd like to go through that with you now. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Snowden.
Excellent. Thank you. So on the slide here, this is sort of like a tree or a breakout of the total project itself, starting with the full amount, the thirty-two point five million. This is broken out by the twenty-seven million from the South Street Garage design through the work of the MFAO Committee, and then right now, a conservative estimate for Town Hall of five point five million. Mr. Mizikar previously mentioned that this article here would be requesting the design costs for this initial project, which we would use cash on hand to fund. So that would come out of the total of the thirty-two point five million. Now, if we were to break these two projects up a little bit further, starting with the DPW Garage, that's going to be funded about sixteen point two million through the utilities and ten point eight million through the general fund. The utility portion has more of the new construction, and the general fund portion has more renovation costs and a little less of the new construction costs. Assistant Town Manager Baldinger, do you want to go over some of the Town Hall expenses right now that we're estimating?
Sure. I can give you a little synopsis of the Town Hall project and what that would be. So the Town Hall renovation portion of this project has three main focus areas, as you can see on the screen. The front section of this building was built in nineteen sixty-six, and much of that building is original. The items that we're looking at for this building include replacing HVAC system in the front section of the building that was installed in nineteen ninety-seven and is beyond its life expectancy of twenty-five years. The replacement system would be highly efficient electrified system, which not only would improve climate control, but will reduce our GHD emissions in line with our sustainability goals. The HVAC in the rear portion of this building where we are now is from two thousand seventeen, so the limited work to that would be replacing the rooftop unit from natural gas to electrify it. The next focus area, as you can see on the screen, is life safety. So this includes installing fire sprinkler system in the front portion on the second floor of this building, which currently has none. Currently, only the rear part of this building has, is sprinkled, and as part of that renovation, the entire, like you said, the entire building would be ultimately sprinkled, and the fire alarm system would be upgraded, since it's also from nineteen ninety-seven and has reached end of life. And then the final and third focus area of this is related to ADA accessibility upgrades. This includes renovating all six bathrooms in this building, four of which are original from nineteen sixty-six, along with various other accessibility upgrades identified in our twenty twenty-two ADA transition plan to improve inclusivity throughout the building. These main focus areas will touch almost every space in this building, which will include some asbestos mitigation and space reconfigurations to create the most efficient use of the building. Moving the DPW administration to the South Street campus supports the town the opportunity to make the improvements in a fiscally responsible manner while also preparing the building for decades to come.
Might go to the next slide, Justin? Thank you. So this slide here helps provide a project timeline for the DPW Garage and Town Hall feasibility and design project. You will notice that step one here is the special town meeting, where the article will request sixty percent of the design cost to be funded with available resources. The intent would be to then move to a special town meeting in April of twenty-five, requesting a borrowing authorization, lest the design cost be previously appropriated in the fall, this special town meeting. Then there would be a ballot question in May, twenty twenty-five, for the, a possible debt exclusion for the general fund portion of this project, which is about sixteen point three million, less the previously appropriated design costs. And then construction would begin on the South Street portion of this project in August, twenty twenty-five. Last we spoke, we talked about the opportunities that we had in funding this project, whether it was going to be entirely through the tax levy or through utilities. And I wanted to take some time now to look at our current exempted debt schedule and go over some of the options we pulled together with our financial advisors on how we can best approach this project. So right now, we have, this is the town's current exempted debt as it rolls off from twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-eight. The fiscal years are along the bottom axis. The vertical axis is the average single-family tax bill based off of twenty twenty-four values. The value for the town of Shrewsbury is eight point seven billion in twenty twenty-four, and the average single-family home value is six hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and sixteen. Throughout the next couple of graphs, those are going to be the same values that we're going to be holding throughout. So right now, if we were to look at FY twenty-five, the exempted debt portion is about seven hundred and fourteen dollars of the average single-family tax bill. And as we look down, we can see that debt is starting to roll off in the future years. This is part of the town's design, where we typically bring on debt as equal principal or declining debt, and in the future, we have the ability to layer on new projects and new debt to lessen the burden as projects come on.
Dave, can I stop you just for a second? So when I look at this, right, if I'm looking at this at home, you're saying that the aver, on the average single-family tax bill, seven hundred and fourteen dollars of it is
Related to exempted debt.
For every project in town, not specific to the DPW project.
This is current, yes.
So current, what's there? It's like, okay, we've got Lake Sherwood, the library, the police station, like, all the projects, all the debt, that's it.
That's exempted, the exempted portion, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, yes. All right, so now, building off of that, Justin, if you go to the next slide, we had our financial advisors run a couple of different models. They were based off of, you know, different interest rates, and then one was a equal-principle model or declining debt service, and another one was a modified hybrid model. This first model here is showing the exempted portion of this debt, which would be around sixteen million or a little less. And if we funded this through an equal-principle model, this would be the impact. So in twenty twenty-six, the tax bill would, looks like it would go up about fifty-three dollars compared to what it was in twenty twenty-five. And then it follows a similar decline going forward. Now, if we go to the next slide, Justin, thank you. This was another model we had run, where we requested that we maintained the FY twenty-five exempted debt impact for as long as possible and then declined it in order to prevent a spike. So for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the tax bill would not be further burdened by the rolling on of this project. And then it starts to decline as it does in the previous model as well. So lastly, if you go to the last one, we can sort of see all these projects layered in together. So twenty-four was what the tax bill was, twenty-five is what we're coming up to, and then twenty-six would be when the project would begin, and we would start seeing expenses on the tax bill. And you can see again that the hybrid model would allow for a consistent tax bill for the residents. The exempted, I'm sorry, the exempted, the equal-principle model would have a slight increase in year one, and then it would follow a similar decline going forward. The main difference between both these models is about four hundred thousand dollars in total interest. So the hybrid model, right now, as projected within the interest rates, is about four hundred thousand dollars greater in interest over the twenty-year borrowing. The equal-principle model would be four hundred thousand less in total borrowing costs. However, there is an increase in the first two years to the residential tax bill. I'm happy to go over anything else in any more detail or answer any more specific questions. I didn't want to go too far without taking a break.
Go ahead, Mr. Mizikar.
So I just want to reiterate a couple of points that Mr. Snowden made. So when we look at this project alone, the total tax impact, if you isolate it, is about a hundred dollars to the average single-family home. So that's a hundred dollars annualized, so most, you know, depending on how you pay your tax bill, some people pay that through their monthly mortgage, right? So it's less than ten bucks a month for those folks. If you pay your quarterly tax bill on time, of course, it's about twenty-five dollars. So the value of having a robust tax base and the economic growth that we've seen within the community and the commercial and residential sectors means that the impact of providing public services, particularly capital investments, is very distributed throughout the community. So it has not a zero impact, you know, no investment has a zero impact, but it has a very marginal impact on the tax bill. And further, because of how we manage our debt, because of our triple-A bond rating, where we can garner the lowest interest rates, we're able to further mitigate the impact of these projects and essentially develop this model very skillfully, where we would have no, the debt service portion of the tax bill would provide no additional impact for this project. So all things being equal, well, not all things being equal, let me back up. So whenever we went through the Beal construction and we went through the police station construction, we had had this opportunity. Those projects were more costly, and they required the tax, they increased the tax bill when we did that debt exclusion. If we choose the hybrid model here, that will not be the case. I'll provide a little sneak preview when we're thinking about the FY twenty-five tax rate. And I'm not trying to steal the assessor's thunder, but we all know that over the past five years or so, because of the capital projects that were taken on and the debt exclusion, that we've had greater-than-average tax bill increases to residents. Looking forward to what we're going to set in FY twenty-five, you know, that will impact tax bills this January, it's much lower. It's less than three percent on average increase to the tax bill. The past few years combined have been, you know, well over seven percent, or on average, about seven percent a year. So we're starting to see that change, right? The debt is starting to roll off now, or in significant repayment for the Beal Elementary School and the police station. And we can reasonably take on these projects, which are much lower in cost, where the revenue model is balanced between the general fund, utilities. We're not exceeding any promises on our utility rate increases. We're keeping them at five percent or less, which is a commitment that we've made to the community, and we're kind of doubling down on our commitment. We need to make this capital investment. We want to do it efficiently, and this gives us an opportunity to do it without any direct increase to the tax bill, especially if we use the hybrid model.
And it doesn't impact anything else in terms of our fiscal plan that we've had and our
It does not. It really keeps the, keeps the operating budget and those revenues separate from our ongoing, you know, debt service requirements. It preserves the duration of the override. And we went really deep into what it may look like to borrow, but my, you know, final point that I want to reiterate is, that's not, we're not looking, we're not asking this question in November. We want to give more, we want, we want to do more design and be able to provide more information to both town meeting in the spring and the voters in the spring, if that's the direction that we move in before, you know, we take that next step. So we have cash on hand through free cash that we would appropriate to this project. We take the preliminary design work up to sixty percent, so we'd have a really good understanding. We'd know that the financial estimates are something that we could heavily rely upon and access the bond market with if we receive approval and move forward from there. So at town meeting, we're just looking to do further design and feasibility work.
Which aligns with our historical approach to capital projects to make sure that they're one, future-ready, and two, last for a long period of time, maybe fifty years. And that's a tradition and level of performance that we can demonstrate again and again. Okay, thank you. And the important piece, too, is looking at the current debt exclusion amount on the average taxpayer, and the important piece is to carry forward at most, at least under the hybrid model, to carry it forward and not additional, and even with, depending on which model you look at, it's year one that would have an incremental increase, and then years as well would be, would be lower, so that was by design.
Yeah, to that point, I mean, if you, if we were to take the traditional approach rather than the hybrid approach, it's about fifty dollars on the tax bill, so, you know, divide that up over whatever makes sense, or keep it as fifty, fifty dollars. That's the annual impact to the average single bill.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Just a comment, I guess.
Go ahead, Beth.
Right, I know that there's always going to be capital projects in a community this size, or really any size, right? Because buildings age. We have a really significant issue at the water and sewer garage. You know, sitting on the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee, you know, having the opportunity, I know we've all had the opportunity to see those buildings, but I think the thing that is important is that, you know, we have a building that needs to come down. We understand that. We also have a building that we know is still in great shape and that we can use. So we're not just looking to tear down a building to build new. We're looking to renovate a building that still has life in it. And that is, again, a way to maximize taxpayer dollars. And if you're, if you're looking at what's coming off, which we often do when we're considering a project and how to fund a project, but I think if you can keep tax bills steady, people appreciate that. And we're very used to, I think, very high dollar amounts when we talk about buildings. And this is not, yes, it is, right, sixteen point three million dollars is a lot of money, but when you spread that out across the whole community, it becomes a sum that is a lot more manageable, I think, and easier for people to kind of absorb when we're talking about twenty-five dollars a quarter or fifty dollars a quarter, depending on which model we decide on. I'm always in favor of excluding the debt. I don't want to stress the operating budget and make it difficult across the school and municipal departments in order to, you know, meet the day-to-day needs of the community. So while I know that it requires a vote, I am in favor of going to town meeting with an article asking for some dollars, right? So we get an understanding of what town meeting thinks, right? Because we haven't really gone too far outside of this room or the building committee to have any sort of discussion on whether or not town meeting sees value in the project. And I always like to see what town meeting has to say on things. So I think this is a really strong approach and one that I am supportive of.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Mr. Mizikar, if you want to go to the next article?
Sure.
Thank you.
Article three. Article four is the adoption of what is known as the prudent investor policy. And this is an article that has been generally requested and discussed through the Finance Committee, and it allows us to invest our trust funds, funds that we hold for a specific purpose. Think our, you know, general stabilization and our OPEB trust fund for other post-employment benefits in a, into what is known as the prudent investment rule. And this rule is a little bit more expansive, although still very conservative whenever it comes to the investment of funds that we have on behalf of the town or specific purposes. It differ, differs from only being able to invest in what's known as the legal list, which is a very narrow list of equity or bond approaches that we can use to invest our funds in. So it provides us a little bit more flexibility for those accounts that we will be holding the funds for a very long time, like other post-employment benefits, and looking to make gains, much like an individual would on their own retirement investments. With this, we would expect higher returns, and those higher returns on the investment, which would mean we'd need to contribute less tax And those higher returns on the investment, which would mean we'd need to contribute less taxpayer dollars over time to satisfy the obligations that the town has for other post-employment benefits and other investments that we make through trust funds. So we plan to have our investment advisors on hand at the finance committee to support the finance committee and answer any questions that they have in detail about how our funds are investment and what this would enable us to do. Article five is the personnel bylaw amendments that Human Resources Director Christina Ordung went through earlier this meeting. Article six is the MBTA zoning that Director McGoldrick went through just a little while ago. And then we have a series of community preservation committee projects that have been recommended for funding. That includes making investments in the congregational church through three different articles. Do I have that right? And making an additional contribution to the town's initiative to restore historic gravestones within Mountain View Cemetery. And then finally, I said ten articles before, the eleventh article would be to put funds in place that would be accessible by the Shrewsbury's three-hundredth anniversary celebration committee so they can begin their efforts in earnest. We had a conversation with the committee at your last meeting, and unfortunately, some of the awkward clauses within the general laws precludes them from using funds that were deposited into their official account. So we'll set up a general appropriation for them to use in advance of calendar year twenty-six. So that takes us through eleven different warrant articles that are under consideration officially by you at your next meeting and signing the warrant.
Any questions? Thank you. Go on to the next item then. To review an act to approve the updated American Rescue Plan Act expenditure plan. This item requests our vote to approve an updated ARPA expenditure plan. We voted to approve the current iteration of the ARPA expenditure plan at our meeting on April ninth, twenty-twenty-four. There was a discussion at that time about funds possibly not being expended. There were actually a small amount of funds that actually were not expended or encumbered at that time. And now it's being brought in front of us to reallocate those funds. Mr. Mizikar, is this yours?
It is, yes.
Okay, great.
So just in summary, with regards to the American Rescue Plan Act funds that were, that are federal funds that were adopted during the coronavirus pandemic, made available to communities in March of twenty-twenty-two. We have a very specific and hard deadline coming up, the end of this calendar year. On December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, we have to encumber, allocate under contract or expend all of our funds or we're subject to having to have them clawed back from the federal government. So we received just over eleven point five million dollars. The board has previously allocated a little over eleven point three million of those funds into projects and had a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that was never placed in to any specific purpose. We committed to the board at your last reallocation in April that we'd be very aggressive in the fall months to ensure that there is not a single penny that we have to return to the federal government and that we're in compliance with our rules and regulations and the expenditure of these funds. So what we're looking to do this evening is to appropriate the final hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars in eight cents that has not been allocated and to reallocate funds from several different projects, which are up on the screen, that no longer need those funds or we are unsure if we would meet the compliance guidelines as far as expending or allocating those funds before the end of the calendar year. So I won't spend a lot of time in in going through the details of the projects we're moving from, but I will just name them generally. So we'll be removing money previously adopted in the areas of utility bill assistance, ADA accessibility improvements at Edgemere Park, various library initiatives, communications program initiatives, community events, marketing materials, the resident academy, which we have other funding for, training within the police department and school textbooks. Most of these projects have been enacted as originally envisioned, but the amount that was appropriated exceeded the need for those projects. So there are no projects the departments requested funds for that are being reallocated this evening that weren't pursued and largely fulfilled as requested by the board. So where are those funds going? So tonight, we propose to further offset the use of the tax levy by another twenty thousand, seventy dollars for payment of a variety of bills with in the Department of Public Works. We plan to reallocate fifteen thousand dollars to install lighting at the Coolidge pickleball courts. This was previously rescinded in April, but we are now confident that we can have this work done in partnership with Selco prior to the end of the calendar year. And as the board is aware, we had previously adopted funds for the renovation of the Raystone Post Building, which is a town building next to Dean Park, for the future home of our recreation department, which would provide office and programming space. So that's where the vast majority of the funds, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars are going. So that brings our total revised amount for reallocation and initial allocation of that hundred and sixty-seven thousand that was never done to three hundred and twenty-three dollars, three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars this evening. So happy to talk about any of the projects that we're reallocating from or to this evening and would look for the board's consideration in a vote if you're comfortable with this plan. We'll be back every month for the next two months to make sure again that we hit all of our requirements.
Any questions or comments? It's pretty straightforward. Chair Michelle?
I have a question. Mr. Mizikar, regarding the ADA accessibility improvements at Edgemere Park, with reallocating that funding, what is happening to the plan for those ADA improvements?
So at this point, we're, we just are not able to put those, that project under contract. We will revisit it through ADA grant awards programs at the state, community preservation committee, project application requests, and our general capital improvement plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Regarding the Raystone Post renovations, I know this will be the future home of our recreation department and just want to reiterate to the community that the, it's currently used by the American Legion and some scouting organizations, and that facility will still be available for use by those organizations?
Yes, they they will continue to have the same access to the building that they have, you know, just a nicer building.
And we were able to tour that building with Mr. Baldinger, and there are renovations are sorely needed in that building. So I'm I'm glad to see another, one of our town assets being improved.
Great, thank you. Anything else? No. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move the board approve the updated ARPA expenditure plan as presented.
Second?
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mizikar said you'll continue to present this on a monthly basis through the end of the calendar year. So great. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to adopt the updated housing production plan. Mr. McGoldrick, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board. Feels like I was just here. So I have a brief presentation prepared. I'm not going to go in in too much depth on this. I know it's been quite the evening already. So the agenda for this evening, I just want to briefly recap what a housing production plan is, the benefits, the requirements of a housing production plan, and then describe our local process for developing the update to the housing production plan. So the, next slide, please. So the requirements of the housing production plan are threefold. It must include a comprehensive housing needs assessment utilizing local and regional data. Must provide affordable housing goals as well as implementation strategies. The key benefits to having an active housing production plan are understanding the housing conditions and needs of the community. Has benefits for safe harbor under an approved and certified plan benefits. And it's a component of the comprehensive master plan. It's also a requirement of housing choice, community designation, which is tied to requirements for grant opportunities. Briefly, speaking about the local process, so we did collect census data and updated the graphs and figures in our prior version of the plan and consolidated that information. We also had a number of local board engagements, both with select board and Conservation Commission and Planning Board. We conducted a Zen City survey, which had two hundred and eighty-two unique responses, our highest response rate ever. And we included a comment box and a question board, which we tabled at local farmers' markets. I'm going to briefly talk about the summary of changes. We updated the comprehensive needs assessment using that local and regional data, specifically the the census data as well as the survey responses. Most of our previously identified trends have continued. And it was important to note that targeted local action has seemed to have insulated Shrewsbury from a number of regional trends that have affected our adjacent communities. In terms of the affordable housing goals, similarly, many, many of the previously identified goals remain relevant today. We did update our projected annual goals for affordable housing production, which is tied to those safe harbor requirements. The ten percent requirement gap now sits at four hundred and two units to meet ten percent. The one-year safe harbor or the half a percent production is at seventy-four units, which is right on par with what we projected in the previous housing production plan. And our one percent is a hundred and forty-nine units for a two-year safe harbor or creation in a two-year period. We also updated our implementation strategies. Many of the previous implementation strategies were completed. And we worked to identify next steps related to those implementation strategies to move them forward in in terms of their initiatives and their next steps. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot has happened in five years. I remember sitting in this room at that meeting when this was presented for approval to the select board, and you read the changes from nineteen, there are a lot, made a lot of progress. The data in some areas, still the same challenges. We've done better with thirty to thirty-four-year-olds, twenty-five to twenty-nine-year-olds are still struggling. And there are other issues that you've identified as well. But it's interesting to see how the community has changed and some things have continued to progress in terms of affordable units. But we're still know that we're a ways away, and that's that's a challenge that we face. Any questions or comments?
I always have comments.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for the revisions to the plan. I know that I sent over some questions and comments that I saw incorporated. I just think it's also important, like, we had a lot of response to the survey, but I also think that some of the comments just really show that there's a lot of uncertainty and discomfort in having conversations around housing. And I think that the common ground we find here is that what we all are looking for is a way to control the growth that we see in the community and that this housing production plan is a tool that we can use to do that. It is, it is not a tool to stop housing or stop growth. I think that we need to just kind of remember that we want people to be able to live and work in our community. We want families to be able to live near their grandparents. We want affordability, and the only way to reach affordability is by creating more housing. And so this is a a step in the process to getting to that ten percent affordable or even getting to the to the safe haven, you know, where we would be able to then choose where we want to see more development. Which developers do we want to work with and kind of chart a little bit of our own destiny as we've talked about in the past? So without this, right, we can't ever be eligible for that safe haven. So I'm glad that we are able to take this next step. I know it was a lot of work to get it done, and I hope that we can make some progress toward our affordability goals, because I think it's just the only way to make housing more affordable is for there to be more housing. Like, it's a kind of a cycle. Thanks.
Yeah, there's a lot of important historical data as well as comparative data. To your point to see how adjacent communities are doing, we're not in isolation here relative to growth in other communities, multifamily units in other communities, local, right near us, Worcester. And it's not just there in terms of Boylston, Grafton, Millbury, Northborough, West Boylston, Westborough, Worcester. So it gives a lot of context that challenges, if people view these as issues, every community has, let's call it growth. There's, growth happens, and as population continues to grow, as desirable areas are sought and population grows, need more affordable housing options. What we saw in twenty nineteen is that we were seeing a migration of certain cohorts of age groups. Still have some of those challenges, and affordability is still a big challenge across the Commonwealth. And we're not unique with Shrewsbury in that aspect. So it's also helpful in terms of historical development. I think there's a lot of information in terms of, it can be seen here, but elsewhere, in terms of multifamily units. The belief that, you know, the Shrewsbury heyday, I think it was more the seventies and eighties, but it still provides context to that, understanding that there are more people here than there were in the seventies and eighties as well. But it's chock full of information, shows progress that we made since the twenty-twelve initial adoption and then the subsequent amendments through nineteen. And then it charts the course, we have the Affordable Housing Trust now, for example, as opposed to reference to a trust under the statute. So a lot of things have changed in terms of potential tools to provide housing opportunities for our residents. So it's a lot of good data and a really good update, so thanks for that. There's no more questions or comments? Yes, please follow up.
Thank you, Chris, for this work. I know it was, it was a lot and, you know, appreciate your revisions. I think one of the, one of the pieces that I was, that I looked forward to reading and certainly look forward to engaging with my colleagues and with the Affordable Housing Trust are the implementation strategies. I know there's a lot of work there, but, you know, Mr. Chair, as you noted, the Affordable Housing Trust is, we're going and we're excited to partner with other community organizations to create not just affordable housing, but deeply affordable housing for those who, you know, need it the most. And it's certainly something that we see here in town and also across the Commonwealth, that this is, the housing crisis is something that needs to be addressed. So, you know, I look, I look forward to, you know, further conversations about housing. And, you know, I think, I appreciate all of the engagement that you did to get feedback from the community. I think just, I heard a recent term, feed forward, so feed forward for the next time. If we could possibly try to, I think, get more equitable responses from different types of demographics, I think would be great, you know, noting here that there's, in the, in the survey responses, we only had three and a half renters, for example. I think that if we could engage some different populations a bit bit more, I think that would help us refine our goals a bit bit better so that we're really responding to the needs of our community.
Thank you. So anything else? If not, what's required as part of the submission requirements is for the board to, should we choose, to adopt the proposed updated housing production plan, which will be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, EOHLC, which we refer to a lot of times, for the HBP to be reviewed. Once it's reviewed by the EOHLC, housing production plan is valid for five years. In addition to the HBP, what's being requested is that the board authorize me to sign a letter that states the plan has been adopted by the Planning Board Select Board and requests approval by the EOHLC, formerly known as the DHCD. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I move the board adopt, I move the board adopt the proposed housing production plan and authorize the chair to sign the letter to EOHLC as drafted.
Second?
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the recommendation of Shrewsbury Electric and Cable Operations, Selco, relative to the Streetlight request of Totondanguli for One Rockwell Drive. This item requests us to approve the recommendation from Selco for the Streetlight request for Totondanguli. us to approve the recommendation from Selco for the streetlight request for Toton Ganguly of One Rockwell Drive. This request previously appeared before September 10th, where we voted to send the request to Selco, and turned, Selco Ascend Communication, which was included in our drive, was the recommendation to add an LED light to an existing utility pole, pole number 42, and the lights located across from where Rockwell Drive meets Cherry Street and better illuminates the intersection, which was the concern of the rest requestor. The annual cost to the town for the light would be approximately $54.42. Any questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second?
Have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Another similar request, to review an act on the recommendation of Selco relative to the streetlight request of Harshel Patel for 136 Old Mill Road.
Move approval.
Second?
Have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 14, to review an act to sign the warrant for the November 5th, 2024 election. This item requests our vote to sign the warrant for the 2024 state election. The election involves the following offices: President and Vice President, U.S. Senator, U.S. Representative, Counselors and the Governors' Council, State Senator, State Representative, Clerk of Courts, and Register of Deeds.
So moved?
Second?
Have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll need to sign four copies of that warrant. That is it. Now, we're going to correspondence. Item 15, email dated September 25th, 2024, from Alexander Strusky, Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, also known as MEPA Office, regarding a notice of MEPA remote site visit consultation, EA 16872 redevelopment of 193 Hartford Turnpike. Looks like that's already actually happened. It's at a remote site visit session scheduled for Wednesday, October 2nd, at 6:30 p.m. Said MEPA comments are due on or before October 11th, 2024, with certificate due by October 18th, 2024. So noted. And the last three items, I'll take them together under ZBA decisions. All ZBA decisions of September 30th, 2024, for items 16, 17, and 18. So noted. That is it for items on the agenda, and if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us this evening. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Good night.